Austin Johnson. And just as a reminder, when we planned out the year, this was one of the presentations that we felt like we wanted to see towards this time, just to get an update on how network is going.
One. They give it the most, yeah. Oh, and two. It's been the longest part. It doesn't come out from the problem. It's fine. Yeah.
Kevin.
Why you can't.
I don't know.
Quick update. See you. Make sure that everything. It's ahead of us. So. We have this little. Here. I turn on. A flash action that you all. Each individual. You don't have to use. All points. The real goal here is to fight the real. Break or whatever. Right in the middle of the road. Speaking of just having teeth, is that? So it's raining. They move their. I'm on one. This is. Oh, no. So he does some CPR. Those are pointing at somebody. Have numbers in training who CPR day anything this year. And. The plan that we had in place, so when the last thing we just. Then I'll just say anything you know. And then. Thank that. Safety and security. Or if we're looking after things there, so hopefully you. Yes, looking at. We put around his house. And you're just. Show that. But what was first. It's a fire, you know. We can find that room and catch that. Say something. It's like putting things down. We've made people have business or. Reporting. My Ted, please, the rep needs to. Keep the. Platform is open, the trainer, if anybody. Does report. Make a call and. Or ask for that. Thank you. Maybe also. I'm through the same. Lucky to have these additional features, just like this picture, because these are things that were already in place when I got here, and I think it's kind of the global standard, so I really appreciate what we have. It's nice to be able to know in the shelter areas, it can be confusing if you're in a weather emergency where to go. Obviously, our AED, there is a rescue and so on and so forth, you can see up there. So what do we need to do? Where do we need to go? There's, there's lots you can do in safety and security. This is just a few of the things that. I think that we should try to move towards next year and some of the things we already are. So. I'll kind of skip around a little bit, you can just read and look at the pictures, but we're already looking into, and Jay, I know has talked to you about the card access, wireless card access in all our classrooms and offices. Huge step up. We're going to work to integrate that with our intercom system, you know, working with Kevin, so that when we go into that scenario and we hit our panic button. Everything is integrated and reacts together, so the doors will automatically lock, so only police can respond and get into those rooms. The clocks and everything will say, making the announcement that it's lockdown, they'll be scrolling a message, they'll be flashing. But all of that integration is huge and glad to see that we're moving forward. This is the. Type of lock, if you look at this one on the right, that's what ours will look like. They make a number of different types of locks, but that's the one that you'll see when we get those implemented. Stop the bleed up there, and I have also, you know, working with Lake Bluff Police Department. So I've invited Chiefs Mizinsky and Lake Bluff PD and actually the Chief from Lake Forest, John Burke, to come and watch a active shooter scenario over in Glitterville. So we'll be there tomorrow, and Lisa's had the opportunity to come over, Kelly came over and watched one a couple of weeks ago. It's just to kind of show how staff are reacting, they've done it for a few years in District Seventy, and they've kind of ramped it up each year to where. Those students are involved in these drills, it's just staff getting the training and the preparedness so that they know how to react and what things sound like within their building. We really wanted to just get chief there and, and work with them on being able to come over and train our staff. I think the training works best when it comes from the police. I can stand up there and talk about it, but when a police officer or the chief of police is saying, this is how you need to respond, this is what we need you to do, I think it's much more meaningful. So really working in conjunction with them, so we can. Like to look into some new radios, talked a little bit about Jay, Jay about this. We have some outdated radios, they work, they can still communicate in each building, but this would be kind of the next level, again, tearing up to how we can integrate all of our systems. We kind of sit in the, a really good suite for our security system, and these radios would fall into that and be able to integrate as well. There's those features that you can add on to them, there's ways that you can have repeaters at the elementary as well as here, and you communicate between the buildings. And just a lot of other great things that we could do, simply getting an alert that a door is open. We know that bad things happen when doors are unlocked, especially exterior doors. If we can get an alert through our system, through our radio, and the door is open, we can go check that quicker, that's going to help us to stay safe and secure. Something that I'd like to implement next year, I think I talked a little bit about it, is a safety week. Still looking at the dates, tentatively the fifteenth through the nineteenth. During that week, I'll make a video, and we'll basically have a day per drill that we have. By the state. So let's say Tuesday is our fire day, I'll have a tip of the day about fires. Probably working with the fire department, help them make the video, they can do the talking instead of me. We'll send that out to families the night before, but then the kids will watch it in the morning, and then they do their fire drill. So it's that collaboration, getting the community, the parents and everybody to have a little bit of a part in that, so. But we'll, everything that week will be about safety, we'll talk about safety, help, we'll talk about. All those. Forals in a timely fashion as well. But looking at your dad. I do just start. Right? It's very. I'd really pull in. You know, going from our chief of, chief of boys to our chief of fire. Some. Um. I. In. Thing was, what's happening? Is that. What else we do about it? There's that degree. Hear those memes, and change anything that needs to be changed if necessary. So we'll take that. So one of our doors, the last thing on there, and I'll come back to the updated vest of rules, but we're really working with the staff on having a closed and locked door policy. We know the locked doors are the best thing. So we just, we're going to change our habits. A little bit. Things that, you know, teachers like to do, and we got to get rid of magnets, get rid of things that are holding doors open, and have those doors closed and locked. Sitting here on the education side, would say, I understand if, if a small group has moved into the hallway. And is working, we don't want to close our door because we still need to be observing them and know what's going on. But if a scenario was happening, you could easily tell those kids to get back in your room and close that door. That would be the only time that I'd say you would have your door open, is if you sent a group out, small group, to do some work. Otherwise, your door shouldn't close, and the kids should be in there, and teachers will. Figure it out, they're creative, they'll figure out how to assign jobs to the kids, and maybe obscene little doorbells, even if some features like on their doors to alert them that a kid is back from the restroom or whatever. And then our vest of rules, just a couple of things, thinking about some upgrades, this is a. We have some older systems, which they work, but. This is a video intercom, it would actually serve as a camera, so we would actually get another video stream that would catch our front entrances all the time. But it's also a way to communicate with people outside the building. If there's something, you know, we should be asking people outside, why are you here? In a nice way, we still want to be welcoming, but how can I help you today? Welcome to Lake Bluff. And, and really find out, well, I'm here to pick up my child, or I'm here to drop this off, or whatever it may be, rather than just hitting the buzzer and letting people enter front door. And then that second layer would be improving those vest of rules and either moving our visitor management system into the vest of you. Right now, we allow a visitor come into our office, and now they're in front of people, so. I don't, I don't think our front office, I'm, I'm sure April and Meredith and Edith are the happiest that they get to tell somebody they're not welcoming a building. Right, because maybe they come up as a person that is not supposed to be. So let's do that outside, in the vest of you, or even outside of our building, and let's let the police come in and deal with those kids. So just trying to change some of that configuration and look into how that will work. So still a lot to do, a lot of fun things to work on. One, did I say stop the bleeding?
Does everyone know what stop the bleeding is? I mean, it's literally stop the bleeding, isn't it?
Expectation by the state board that we are training our staff, so we can go work on that. It's an area that we need to, it's about every two years now, and then in twenty seven, twenty eight, it'll be every five years, they decided to up the amount of time between training. We need to get our staff trained, and we need to get. Kids in classrooms that are available, just in case we have them available in our building, I think in our AED cabinets, but we need to have more around just in case. Those are all the things that I'll continue to work on next year and. Be making everybody safe and secure again.
Some of them, I know Tim had a question about. You know, expenses associated, but well, of course, bring most of the.
And nothing major.
Nothing major like that. Doesn't even have. And they're great, usually too. So great. Have a. And you didn't learn a lot about this. Still attending all the regional, state meeting. Like reading with other, I guess, safety and security in the area, now with other districts, and I just know, which is definitely possible. To, still that we all know.
Question. What you're saying just.
Excellent.
For talking about. Is that. That they have to listen to anything that's occurring. Safety emergency light. You know, you. That is. Mostly. Easy dad. Feeling. So. We have others. Final, maybe that can. We've been talking about the forever, so it's not a surprise, but I like to. Bring it. Fire, so we finally got the. For a. Excuse me. Next time we get, talk all their companies. So we got four. Was. For, for those who. There'll be more of a lot of people, people are each person in different states, and so I think that is all. He doesn't have any. And somehow, if they come back, they can look at yours for a drink time, which is the mixture of a lot of things. I think there was a. I shouldn't advise my. It's just. So crazy, you know, hardware. On its way, it's in the house, not in their warehouse, and then. Once we get. Going through, we'll move forward, start working on that scheduling, so the next, next step really is to schedule for the summer. We'll work here at the middle school, starting here, then transition over to the elementary, probably upstairs. Working there first because I'll clean up there during summer school, and we'll move downstairs, there are some. Key, some key cores that we have to figure out, which is nothing major, but we can solve the key cores from here, get transferred over to elementary, it'll be a very minimal cost on.
Did you purposely get locked out to show something?
That is. Yeah. Installed on the box and. So.
All these things that you have done are. I can't believe we didn't have them before, and I'm so glad that we do, so thank you. Yeah. So great. I did have one question. Illinois, safe to Illinois, thank you. How is that, how do the kids know about this?
I know here at the middle school, I'm very.
It's like signs on the back of. Around the school. And then on the back of IDs. And then on the Bobcat bus.
Do you feel like that student body knows how to access that, if they, yeah, just like.
Well, it's just always like the end of the. She.
Right.
Making sure they're aware of that.
Any other questions for Austin? Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Khan, you are up next with audit engagement.
So we will be bringing a. One year. Audit engagement. For Google at the next meeting. For the, to audit the, this year, ending of this June. There's really not enough time now to go out and do an RFP, and a real auditor. We've been with Baker-Tully now for ten years, it's kind of flown by. And I also included some materials in the, in the board package. Whether or not or go off and you should change your auditors. It's good practice to have a different auditor every once in a while, just because. It makes sure that you're, they're independent and that you get fresh eyes looking at things. You know, so those are the pros, the downside is just that. Go through with your auditor, there's a learning curve, and it takes more work from the. Staff to get them what they need, and. There's some learning time for generating reports and things like that. Baker-Tully is an excellent company, they've got a very good reputation. I've been very happy with them, we work well together. They. Have been very on time with our reports, so especially last year and the year before, there were a couple, many, many of them. Were late and having to file extensions. Technically, the report's due October fifteenth, most people filed by November fifteenth and signed by December fifteenth. We're done on time, all the time, so, and I know. That we use is very involved in. A lot of professional organizations and works with this beyond actual lineup bars and things like that, so they're very competent. So. It's really just a matter of, there's, you can change your whole audit form, or you can also change the. Within our form, that sometimes also gives you some of the same, so I just wanted to. Open it up for discussion, maybe create an audit committee where if the board would like to look for a new auditor, or at least issue an RFP, and I mean, I guess the other benefit of issuing an RFP is you can. Choose to invite your current auditor or not, you can get pricing from lots of different auditors, we've not gone out and gotten new pricing, so in ten years, so. It's just to be involved in that process to determine if and how weak our audit meant to go through the selection for my name, also as a person, for you to choose to. Something, do you have questions?
Do you feel like it's a best practice for us to? Do this?
Um. Sort of begrudgingly, because I. Yeah.
You said. We can, we can also have a new partner from the current place participate in the RFP. So.
So what, what we can do, if you can say, we want to, we want to, we want you to participate in the RFP, but we want a different partner, just.
Yeah, just affect.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think. We, I, I call them whenever I have a question, make sure that I'm doing stuff right, or if there's a new standard, they help me with it. So, you know, I mean, I enjoy working with our audit reasons, I'm not necessarily looking to change, but. It does. Yeah, I think when we did change ten years ago, there was a need to change because our, our front of scenes were not adequate. And if there are a lot of better coming ones out there, so. I think it's good to get.
Hard, because. You like everything we've been happy with.
Right, I think our, I don't think our financial statements are. So the other option is to, if you are particularly concerned about internal controls or something like that, you can go out and get a separate internal control audit from the separate auditor, make it that scenario of concern for the board. I think our financial statements accurately with what the. Business of the district, like, there's some maybe. Problem with that. We have it shoot bonds, and. That holders are, are, have been happy with our. Statements, we do apply for, if I think it's a maximums and reporting every year, and the, from organizations we get from every year, and a lot of very specific standards that need to be met in our reviews, and so. From a. Technical standpoint, the, you know, the statements are. The best, right?
Is there a risk if we go out to bed and decide to go back with them, that. There would be a difference in price, like, are we locked in anything with?
No, again, so an RFP is not, is a, is a lot more flexible than a bid, you don't have to take the lowest bidder, and in fact, you. The price is just one consideration, I think it's usually, it's kind of like transportation, you really want to consider some of the other things first, you'd have to have a list of criteria of things that you want them to. Present, and then prices one, so. I suppose they can come back with higher price, but you can always negotiate, because it's not like a big where, one, that's the number, and. If you, you really select your, your part based on all the other factors, and then you won't.
Understand the prudent, so, you know, why we would do this. Yeah, so I don't love to fix things that aren't broken.
Yeah, I kind of. Had concerns about like the unknown, but also understand the need for what a new fresh set of eyes brings, and do you, like, have. Do you have enough staff to like. Group to handle and new honor, would that be an issue for, for you and your?
Good question. Yeah.
Hey, so. Our financial system, um, here two years ago, so I had to regenerate all the reports and things, and, you know, they would ask for something, and say, let's do what you get. Or some. They probably want to order to, to switch. I mean, I just think you just need to weigh the risk of. Picking versus. I'm not really recommending. Employee or another, and you can also. Consider it and then decide you want to delay it, and then a year or two. Start looking, or if we have certain problems, or when you can write, you can have the RFP, invite the current auditor, and then.
Decide not to. No, send us a switch, yeah.
There's not a lot of risk to doing that, it's more just the proper involved in. Putting out the RFP and growing the period, but it's probably a good process to go through. Whether you decide to switch or not, just.
Sure.
Yeah.
We don't have a.
This year, because there's only a number of time between now and this year, we're starting. So this is something that. I'll be.
Like to go to the. Best point, thanks. Yeah, I think the thing I appreciate is that we don't need to do it, I mean, we're not having any concern. Work for Jay, and he was. I do. That's out there.
It's one of the boards.
Yes.
And they're in. Lot of. The whole.
Thank you. All that I'm on. Treasures report. We talked about, since we do have kind of a newish board, we haven't really reviewed what's in the monthly treasures report. I don't know if you got an idea. Go over. Sure.
In our. Board policy, so if you look. There, I will run. Just before. I understand.
Nine. Four fifty.
Talks about. Should be handled. And so it was. Right. We can't really wait, but we have to pay, we have to worry to be. Salaries and benefits, and so those kinds of things, just, once you're going to the beginning of the year, it just goes, and we have to make payroll, and we have to keep the lights on and things like that, and so we don't wait for. Approval for those kinds of things. And then it also talks about, we added a section for the summer when we don't meet, where it allows us to. allows us to able to set up the report. And then if nobody objects to anything, pay them retroactively. Then the last paragraph talks about um establishing revolving funds and petty cash funds. So there are some things that we need to pay that we can't wait for board approval. Um and the interest account is the mechanism by which we do that. So we've li- limited it to five thousand dollars. And I think one of the older policies had that number in it. And as we've gone with press, we've changed it a little bit, but it basically allows us to pay bills um without board approval. And then the board approves and withdraw, but the limit is five thousand dollars. So we can't just pay a twenty dollar bill. We have to that we have to go through full approval. But if it's less than five, um that's it. The total of it is all less than five. Then we can go ahead and pay those. And then we bring out a separate report, then press report or have retroactive. So that's the reason why I did those report and an impression report. Uh then we also um four colon five five is our, you know, based our use of credit cards or P cards. That's our P card policy. And that allows us to use credit cards to buy things. And so there's a bunch of rules in there about what we can use them for, how we can use them, says we can't um get around purchasing laws and things like that by using them. And those things are also sort of purchased before they're approved. If you you we can have a purchase order process. So like we can get internal approval to buy those things beforehand, but generally we can't approve them because we've already bought them. So then we put those also on a list um for kind of retroactive approval or oversight. And so we publish them, say, the board is not like pre-approved its expenses, but it all is the of the things that we paid for the credit card. So it's really transparency and also just getting that. So that's why we have a separate credit card report. And then I think we don't generally, but recently we ended up paying some bills out of our activity account. Um I mean, that and that is not or is not really required to approve those, but we those are usually fiduciary funds that we're paying and we're holding and paying on behalf of somebody else for holding those funds and managing them. And in this case, we were paying some district expenses out of that account because of the nature of the way that we set about them. So wanting to have the board approve this, this is. But you typically see them. And then there occasionally we will also call out separately or number expenses because there was a lot. Uh yeah, some more numbers weren't crazy if they. So we've got a whole bit and when you say we we want to, we want you to cut those on in the meeting and separately list all of board member expenses. Um so that whenever there are board members, such as all these persons, we. I'll listen to.
Makes sense. And any questions on any of that?
In the normal treasures report, um the first page, you just an exactly summary, doesn't how we are moving relative to budget. Um the this is how we're doing with revenue and expenditures, kind of any things that are um notable. Uh we'll call it any risks. And then generally talk about kind of our cash and most of the balances on that first page. And then rather than have people hump through those lists, the those lists contains a lot of stuff. And there's usually things that are recurring or have been pre-approved or just amendments on contracts that we know about. So I try to pull on anything more than a couple of thousand dollars that is unusual or notable um different, just so you can see it there. And also if there's anything on that in kind of point, I'll also throw it in there. So I'm going to make it from page of the report, you can see anything um that that might be definite or unusual for that month, but no, it's reasonable size. Then the the kind of graph that I include is just our fund balance um budget and the actual, so you can kind of see how we're tracking. And then a bar is underneath that with revenue expenditures, some kind of other sources or uses in mind. And then just, you know, balance sheet. And then come statement. Um so the balance sheet gives you a picture of what our assets and liabilities are. Much cash we have, what our investments are, liabilities. What our fund balances and then the statement of revenue expenditures is presented object and my function. Object means like what are we buying? What are we spending it on? Salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and then my function is more what are we doing with the money um for purposes of these? And so that brings it down by general education, special education. Administration competition is a so you can kind of see really why, you know, what we're what we're buying and then why we spend a lot of resources on. And then kind of the last page is just a summary of everything altogether, all the funds added on. What uh what the budget year to date is, what the actuals year to date are. And then any if there's any significant variances in expedition.
Great. Any questions?
It's a great report. It's very good.
It's helpful to remind you of what we're looking at and trying to look at it.
I mean, so there's a lot like there's a there's a lot of detail. I probably, you know, if I were looking at it, I would like add I made the executive summary. Probably we go to the last page first. Like if you want me to read one thing, that's kind of high level. Are we doing relative to where we expected? And why? And then if you're interested in some of the other, if you really want to look at some of their stuff. It's there, but and in the as a um oversight body, like that's what you're most concerned about. How we're doing versus how we thought we're gonna be doing. Are we gonna finish the year on budget and then uh or if there's any things that are happening that weren't expected? What's what's the cause of the?
Great. Thank you. What do you have?
Um so what the what these reports each month? I always end up focusing on I think on page number five, which is um you know, the the funds by um function. Yeah. And and just looking at what we're spending on um education and what we're spending on support. Um and you know, it's just the details are all there. Um. And so I thought it would be very because I think these two, those two items are the biggest expenditure items we've got. Um categories. Um I mean, obviously, transportation's a big one, but you know, once you're signing a contract, you're not much you can do about it. Um. And so those are the two that are really try to focus over, just see how we're doing basis. Budget, how we're doing last year. And you know, there's a lot of detail. So I thought it would be easier for the board to be able to focus on these um with just a summary kind of a thing. Because I I love that graph that you've got, that first graph that you've got is fantastic. It's showing us where we are with our fund balances and you know, where we're looking to kind of end up and everything. And you don't have to go to, you know, your first page or second page to to look at those details because you get it wrong right there. So I was looking at just so a very simple um graph that I made. And I I am not I am not literate in trying to make a um make a straight speed and convert it. And I might have a few of these extra. If you can draw a graph with colors and everything, it would have taken me three days.
Thank.
But this is all I'm looking at. This um maybe adding.
Friends of the mother. I'm glad you're.
Does that seem like it? Just create.
My sorry, I. I'm worried down.
Bunch of just under twenty to the destruction of bringing services that were said and.
The one picture we had this. Things like that. Since our song. I'm sorry. The German. I'm sorry. We're through. I'm just thinking at the end of February. We're ninety-eight percent budget on instruction and hundred and two in support services because you have a little bit of poison in there, especially particularly at food service. If we're starting to push this year because it was new.
Yeah, the problem with this graph is you've got to you've got to make a a scale. You can't start at zero or else the numbers are so close that it doesn't know you need. Stop.
That was the only thing I had at that point. Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the level of.
Think this is it's material or there's you know, I it's not really anything actionable.
That's.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that if that's not a huge heavy lift. What do you guys think?
No, I I think it would be it's just um I always feel like what I want from you is like remember during COVID, the kids checked in with like a smiley face and then moved that. I feel like. I want a chart of like every board meeting, like where is Jay in this moment? Like be this. Yeah, I'm right. So I mean, this this could be very helpful. Yes. Similarly to my very official smiley face card.
Like the idea of a at a glance thing, right? Where you just look and say, okay, we're on traffic. Great. Um I agree. My concern here is that we don't have, we know exactly how much we're going to spend on personnel, I would say, every year, right? Already?
Yeah, more or less. There are the the things that are not as predictable are substitute teachers.
Sure.
Um.
Maybe staffing for like release times would be here too or no?
Yeah. Trying to think. You know, food services in there and that's something that was a little bit more ambiguous or perfect this year.
But I mean, like you said, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I would I would say great if in this scene, there's sometimes if we're not fully staffed, we've got a bunch of aids and
we can't, you know, for whatever reason, people leave and we're not fully staffed for very time. They could change.
Okay. Well, then why don't we try it for a little while and we have that again? Yeah. That's not bad.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for these. Yeah, that's a lot of work.
You're respectful.
Um that's the thing that we have tonight. Somebody has anything else to have? Still, unless you guys on. May I question to adjourn the April fifteenth committee of the full meeting at seven fifty-six PM. All in favor? I I any opposed? No, meeting is adjourned unless you know.